The Baron Longmire. Paige and the Baron Longmire. Martin, Martin, you do. We, we need you down here. Thank you. So can we just swap these because I can't control. I still have them.
Is it not working?
No. I'd like. Here. Can I get an agenda, please? Thank you. I'd like to call to order the December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. This morning, we have with us to bring the invocation Reverend David Everett, Junior Pastor of Reconciling Lives through the Kingdom Church Ministries. Would you please join in supporting for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Good morning. Thank you for having me to come down and to do the invocation for this final meeting of the year as we transition from one season to another. And just briefly, I'm reminded of my grandmother when she would cook a cake. She would always say that it's not complete without the icing. So thank you for allowing me to be the icing today. Father, we thank you today. For this is the day that you've made. And because you made it, we're gonna sing, shout, redance, rejoice, and be glad in it. We thank you for this opportunity to embark upon another meeting, God, of the minds, of the hearts, and of the concerns of this county, this city, and of course, this state. God, we thank you that you've given us a heart of people that wants to do justly and right for the people. Your word declared that if we acknowledge you in all of our ways, that you would direct our path. So we thank you for guidance, leadership, and camaraderie with humane results. God, we give you the glory forward. And we thank you for the peace that surpasses all understanding. Let this season end with a season of joy and begin the next season with a season of caring and love for all mankind. It's in your matchless name that we do pray, and we call it done by faith. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are very fortunate to have with us some of our retirees. We have ten employees who are retiring as of January first, twenty-twenty-four. This group has a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight years and nine months of experience. Yeah.
Wow.
So we have some of them present today, and as I call your name, I would invite you to come down and meet the commissioners right on this area here. Wayne Dobbs, building inspections, twenty-one years and six months. Eric Linsley, directed facilities and maintenance, thirty years and nine months. Robert Houston, jail administrator, twelve years and seven months. Pen, Eartha Gardner, thirty-five years and ten months, tax auditor three. Willie Gray Withers Chandler, twenty-eight years and five months. And Net Knight, public safety dispatcher, two, thirty-one years and three months. And Perry Horton, ten years and five months, equipment operator, three. Those are the ones that we knew were coming. Did any other retirees come that we have not heard? All right, we're starting in no particular order. But this is the, uh, this is what our recognition says. Upon your retirement, the Mobile County Commission presents this certificate to each of you, and it includes, it expresses our thanks and gratitude for what your number of years of service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success. And the first one is to Eartha Gardner, thirty-five years and ten months. Wow, congratulations. Our second retiree, Willie Gray Withers Chandler, twenty-eight years and five months. Robert Houston, twelve years and seven months. Perry Horton, ten years and five months. And Net Knight, thirty-one years and three months. I know there's some supervisors somewhere crying. Wayne Dobbs, twenty-one years and six months. Eric Linsley, thirty years and nine months. Do we have any speakers this morning?
No one signed up to speak this morning, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Herr.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Number one, approve a list of claims.
Some move.
I want to clear something up before I second that. I, I know I, I've had some people call me Santa Claus. I just want everybody to know that I'm Randall Claus. I'm his much younger, much more handsome, younger brother. And I'll be the proxy for Commissioner Do-It this morning. So I second that.
Lawyer, can we do that? No, that's a right lawyer answer.
Anybody who wants pictures of Santa's brother after the meeting, he's available.
Twenty-five dollars a picture.
Younger, handsomer brother, he says.
So I'll second.
Two, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
The public hearing is now in session. Do we have speakers for or against? Hear none. The public hearing is now closed.
Three, approve appropriation contract with the Boy Scouts of America, Mobile Area Council, in the total amount of twenty thousand dollars for general operating expenses with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Four, approve appropriation contract with Mary G. Montgomery High School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from District Two Education Funds to assist with the cost of lighting the softball field for Mary G. Montgomery High School.
Some move.
Second.
Five, approve appropriation contract with Allentown Elementary School Children First Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars from District Two Education Funds to cover the cost of playground shade structures for Allentown Elementary School.
Some move.
Second.
Six, approve sponsorship agreement with Gulf Coast Caribbean Carnival Association in the amount of two thousand dollars from District One Commission Funds for its second annual Gulf Coast Caribbean Carnival.
Some move.
Second.
Seven, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Symphony in the total amount of ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for its preludes and strings programs with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Eight, approve covenant of purpose, use, and ownership for county-owned real, real property at the Ballabatri Dock's development and to authorize Commission President to sign all documents.
Some move.
Second.
Nine, approve professional service agreement with Helios Alliance for services provided in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty dollars related to the opiate litigation funds pending legal review.
Some move.
Second.
Uh, number ten was held over at conference. Eleven. Approve First Amendment Memorandum of Understanding between Mobile County Commission and Water Works and Sewer Board of the City of Satsuma to implement a project included in the Alabama Gulf Coast Recovery Council's multi-year implementation plan for the Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project as remaining restore funds for this project in the amount of one million eight hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars are insufficient to complete the project. The Board wishes to supply an additional funding in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars and authorize the Commission President to sign all documents.
Some move.
Second.
Twelve, approve Mobile County Animal Services Volunteer Handbook and Volunteer Agreement and authorize Animal Services Staff to implement the volunteer program pending legal review.
Some move.
Second.
Thirteen was held over at conference. Fourteen. Approve professional services agreement with Sharon Pilgrim as court reporter for the Juvenile Court Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Services in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars at a rate of three thousand dollars per month from detention subsidy funds for the James T. Strickland Youth Center pending legal review.
Some move.
Second.
Fifteen, approve contract amendment number four with McNally Land Design for Mobile County Blue Way Trail Development to extend the period of performance to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
Some move.
Second.
Can we go back to fourteen for just a minute? I don't think we need services on Thirteenth Judicial Circuit. It's just. Sorry. The services at Thirteenth.
Yes.
It's Thirteenth Judicial Circuit. I think the services.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We will strike that on number fourteen. Sixteen. Approve transfer of maintenance agreement between Mobile County and the City of Saraland for the City of Saraland to take over the maintenance of portions of Celeste Road and Radcliffe Road for a period of three years.
Some move.
Second.
Seventeen. Approve revising Mobile County Commission August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, agenda item number sixteen, to remove the date January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five from the historical musical drama schedule of Souls of Time Event License Agreement Addendum with Global Spectrum doing business as O V G three sixty for the rental of the Singer Theater.
Some move.
Second.
Eighteen, authorize sub-receiving agreement with the City of Pritchard for removal of spot blight for Community Development Block Grant for up to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Nineteen, authorize memorandum of understanding with City of Pritchard in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand from to purchase fire equipment under the Community Development Block Grant.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty, authorize sub-receiving agreement with the City of Ballabatri for replacement of the heating and cooling system at the Ballabatri Senior Center for Community Development Block Grant Funds for up to one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars pending legal review.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-one, approve agreement with Richard McLaughlin for professional consulting services for cost allocation plan services related to the setting of direct and indirect cost rates in an amount not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-two, approve change order number one with construction labor services for Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project. The change order will increase the contract by fifty-five thousand, and the new contract will be in the total amount of three million four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and will increase the contract by forty-five calendar days. The cost of this change order will be reimbursed by the Water Works and Sewer Board of the City of Satsuma.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-three, approve appropriation contract with Bay Area Women Coalition in the amount of five thousand dollars from District One Funds for its Trinity Gardens Black Heritage Parade.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-four, accept resignation of James White of the Board of Directors of the Mobile County Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-five, approve appointment of James Alvin Middleton, Jr. to serve on the Board of Directors of the Mobile County Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection Authority, replacing James White effective January first.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve contract with the University of South Alabama in the amount of eighty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars to provide archival services to conduct Phase One of an archives establishment project realizing the future from the past and honoring those who failed the breach. African-American documents, material culture, and miscellany at Bishop State Community College.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-seven, adopt resolution approving the, approving request of the Revenue Commission for offices at Michael Square Shopping Center, Theodore Oak Shopping Center, and Eight Mile Shopping Center to dispose of certain items from the fixed, fixed assets inventory list to clear us, declare as surplus, declare as surplus and authorize items to be disposed.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approve reappointments, uh, to the Gulf Coast Resource Conservation and Development Council, each for two years as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Twenty-nine, authorize sub-receiving agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Southwest Alabama in the amount of up to one hundred and forty thousand dollars of Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide roof replacement for eligible residential homeowners within the urban county.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty, approve appropriation contract with Mobile County Protecting Animals Lives Society in the total amount of fourteen thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents from District Two Commission Funds to pay for veterinary services and medication for animals adopted or fostered from Mobile County Animal Shelter pending legal review.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-one, approve contract amendment number twelve to the Mobile County Park Initiative Contract with Mott McDonald, Alabama to add additional services for Bayfront Park Building and Site and add bidding and construction, engineering, and inspection services for Bayfront Park Boardwalk. Costs associated with the contract amendment will be reimbursed by the Natural Resource Damage Assessment Grant.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve change order number one with Ben, Ben M. Radcliffe Contractor for Bayfront Park Restoration and Improvements Building and Site. This change order will decrease the contract by one hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, and the new contract will be in the total amount of five million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars and fifty cents.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve sponsorship, sponsorship agreement with People United to advance the Dream Mobile in the total amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for its Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. Birthday Celebration Project Subject to Commission of Submission of Paperwork and legal review with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-four, consider taking the following action on bids.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-five, approve renewal of software maintenance agreement with Blue Alley in the amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents pro, for pro support for AppSync two thousand twenty-five Power Store five hundred renewal for the Sheriff's Office.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-six, approve renewal agreement of GovRider Multi-Use Software from CPA Ryder in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-seven. Approve renewal of subscription agreement with Carisoft Technology Corporation under the current G S A schedule in the amount of sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents for DocuSign E-Signature Enterprise Pro for state and local government envelope and enterprise premier support for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve renewal of agreement with BB's Pest, Pest and Termite Control for Africa Town Hall and Food Bank Termite Renewal D in the amount of four hundred dollars.
Some move.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve renewal of agreement with Knox Pest Control in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars for the Building Inspection Department for termite renewal inspection.
Some move.
Second.
Forty, approve maintenance agreement with CPC Office Technologies in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars for Formax Shredder for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-one, approve maintenance agreement with CPC Office Technologies in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars for maintenance of one reco plotter for the Geographic Information System Department.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-two, approve maintenance agreement with CPC Office Technologies in the amount of three six, three hundred and sixty dollars for one reco plotter for the Building Maintenance Department.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-three, approve amending Mobile County Commission October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, agenda item sixty-three, to correct the contract amount to read as follows. Approve thirty-six month lease agreement with Quadient under the current purchasing agreement National Association of State Procurement Officials contract for a three hundred LPM base puffy postcard feeder, weighing module, weigh platform conveyor sacker, and a scale stand in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, thirty dollars and eighty-four cents for the County Commission.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-four, approve memorandum of understanding between the Mobile County Commission and the Administrative Division of Mobile County to document the obligation and related expenditure responsibility of American Rescue Plan Act, state, and local fiscal recovery funds provided to the county.
Some move.
Second.
Item forty-five and forty-six were voted at conference. Forty-seven, approve non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on Public Right-of-Way with Alabama Power Company for Project Chickasaw Streets Gray Drain Base and Pave with no cost to Mobile County for this relocation.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-eight, approve updated disadvantaged business enterprise plan for the Jeremiah A. Denton Airport in accord with the Federal Aviation Administration and the U.S. Department of Transportation.
Some move.
Second.
Forty-nine. Approve preliminary and final plat of Rhodes Addition to Brown Loop Road and preliminary and final plat of Collins Place.
Some move.
Second.
Fifty, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Gulf Crest Road Bridge Rehabilitation.
Some move.
Second.
Fifty-one, accept request of High Purity Silicon America Corporation along with a petition signed by Yvonne and the Alabama State Port Authority to change the name of Mitsubishi Lane and adopt resolution formally changing the name of said segment to Polysilicon Lane for approximately six thousand two hundred and fifty-nine feet beginning at the end of Yvonne Road and continuing to the municipal limits of the City of Mobile.
Some move.
Second.
Fifty-two, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from the property owners for the below-listed projects requested by the Engine Department, Engineering Department as follows.
Some move.
Second.
And Commissioners, we have one add-on this morning. Uh, which we'll read as follows. Add-on number one, approve agency agreement authorizing the Alabama Secretary of State to act as its agent, as the Mobile County's agent for the purposes of paying postage necessary and performing the mailing of certain notices pursuant to the National Voting Rights Act of nineteen ninety-three.
Some move.
Second.
Uh, fifty-three, uh, commission announcements and/or comments.
Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope you all get an opportunity to spend some good quality time with family and friends, and you enjoy yourself, and you come back and the new year all rested. So Merry Christmas, everybody. So Merry Christmas, everybody.
I just want to echo those sentiments. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, you know, you look up here, and this may look like a joke or something, but you know, we, we have a very serious job, and everyone in here performs those duties every day to make sure that we get what we need to have done for the citizens of Mobile County. And I'm very thankful to you guys, and I'm sure the citizens of Mobile County would say the same if they were here. But I want everyone to have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you guys. I guess, I guess we'll see them again this week.
And just thank you for the sacrifices that, that you make on, on, for us and for the people we serve together. We just take this moment, we don't say, we say it a lot when you get ready to, to go, but we're going to say it more as you're here to know that we really appreciate what it takes to work for the government, we know. And, uh, we thank you for your service and your sacrifice. Merry Christmas, Jeff. Jeff Tynan needs a special Merry Christmas request. Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Commissioners, before you adjourn, we do have a brief executive session, I'm guessing fifteen, twenty minutes. Maybe you can conclude this meeting by going to executive session after you deal with the injured care board. I would certify going to executive session for the reasons of potential economic development issues are appropriate. Under the Alabama Open Meetings Act, there'll be no voting. I would offer fifteen to twenty minutes at the most. You can roll call that, and then you can adjourn, and then go into your injured care board.
You didn't, you didn't mention that you were a duly licensed attorney in the state of Alabama.
I did prove to you, uh, Randall Claus that I am.
You did not say that.
I would further certify I'm a licensed, a lawyer, properly licensed in this in Alabama. I've proven that with my appropriate Alabama bar card to.
I'd just like to hear it.
Santa Claus do it.
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Item fifty-four, approve request for motion to adjourn until January 13th, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
I'd like to call to order the December 23rd injured care board meeting.
Item one, approve minutes of the meeting of November 25th, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
Two, accept report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance of the injured care fund at November 30th, 2024. Funds available, $149,276.35.
Some move.
Second.
Three, approve request for motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
We stand adjourned.
We go.
Green.
So we stand in recess.
Yeah, we're, right, we're in recess for that, but then we're journeying from there.
LeBaron. LeBaron Longmire.